Talking about CNA and also what's going on at Seton Medical Center. My name is Dr. Rod Dasmagboal. I'm the mayor for the city of Daly City. I know it's very, very important for you all to come through. It's like 5:10 in the evening and usually would be at this time to be with our loved ones, eating dinner. So let's get this show on the road. Y'all agree?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. So we're all here trying to inform the community, voice out our opinions and our perspectives on what's going on with CNA and also with AHMCC at, with Seton. And I just, I think this is a good time to pass out, not pass out, but like to encourage dialogue, engage in dialogue, and educate our whole community about what's going on with our hospital here in Daly City. So I'd like to go ahead and just pass it down to, all the way to my left with my vice mayor, and then we'll do introductions with Vice Mayor Ravi Mathura, work our way down, then I'll shoot it to our supervisor.
Thank you, Mayor Rod. First, I want to thank the mayor for organizing this town hall with the encouragement and assistance of Julie from CNA. I think this is a critical time and it's a necessary issue to bring up and raise now. And so I'm very grateful that we have this opportunity. I really, I'm all about listening today, especially from the community, the nurses, everyone really that's involved in Seton, because I think we can be productive, but in order to be productive, we need information, we need data, we need evidence. And so with that perspective, I promise you, I'm keeping an open mind and I'm, and I'm going to be listening with great care as to your comments, and I'm hoping that we, we can all join together and take action and resolve this in the best interests of the community, the workers, and for the patients. So, thank you all.
I'd like to introduce Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to just thank again Julie for your support on this from CNA and also for mayor putting this on the agenda. You know, we know that Seton is definitely an institution that we all deeply care about from many of us going there and many of our family members going there as well, and it's been a long journey. And so today, you know, I am in solidarity with the workers, the nurses, and the healthcare workers, to the doctors that have been in the trenches for so many decades. And hearing firsthand from each and every one of you is so important because you are there at Seton. And so I am here also to listen and also to work together with each and every one of you, because we know that patient care, workers' rights, and having this institution that has helped so many remain in our community. And so I look forward to hearing from you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Manalo. I'd like to pass the mic to Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank everyone for coming out today and first recognize Councilmember John Goodwin as well for coming from Koma, because this is an issue that affects all of us, not just here in Daly City, but regionally and so on, because the community hospital, this is all we have, this is it. We've been fighting, I know I've only been doing it for 14 years, but these nurses, off the back of the nurses and off the back of our healthcare workers and the workers in general, it's just been a long, hard fight. They never give up from doing, having to, forced into doing a strike. They were forced into doing a strike. I want the public to know that. It's not that they want to do it, they were forced into it. And I was there for the two days and saw their faces and the resiliency of the care for their patients, the care for being a nurse, and who do we call when we need it? And how in the world are you in an emergency room and you're a nurse and you don't have enough staff, three people are code blue and you cannot get there? You don't have the resources for the bedding, you don't have one person that put in the nuclear who's on call, and these conditions have been deteriorating with our eighth and ninth floor closed. You'll be hearing more about that later. And, and I'm glad to work on the ground with our California Nurses Association, our NUHW, our Local 39, our San Mateo Labor Council with Rosa in the back. We stand in solidarity, we stand with the community, and this affects all of us, because God forbid, even right here tonight, if there was an emergency, and everybody is a Kaiser member, and even a Kaiser member, you go there for a stroke because they're certified. I want that to be clear, Dr. Perez knows that. He'll be speaking about the criticalness of this meeting tonight, and that we need to put some resources in here. There's a $10 million left out of the county money for the Bridge Gap funding, which is public money to a profit AHMCC. That is not, as what I understand, I tried to get a copy of the contract, but have not been succeeding with the county yet, but hopefully we'll hear more about that. And I think that they need to be putting into the resources to support these nurses, to support that workers, give them a contract, and a lot of them are per diem now. This is our family. This is our family, and we have been pushed apart. No longer can that happen. And I'd like to say that on behalf of Assemblymember Kevin Mullin, which wrote me a note, he stands in solidarity and definitely is in a watchful eye, Congresswoman Jackie Speer, and we all know, we've all heard from them, and thankful for their support, and Assemblymembers, as well, and all of us together, because this is our community, these are our family, these are our lives, these are our nurses and healthcare workers, and it's going to stop, it's going to stop. It has to stop. I didn't understand it. So, and it actually has the signs of closing, and this is scary to the community. No community member should have to worry about that. So, thank you very much for being here and look forward to hearing everyone's comment, and I look forward to speaking at the end. And there's no place I'd rather be than be with all of you, and I've been on the front lines and I will continue to be, to fight, fight for all of you and fight for our community, because that's what we're here to do together. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you, member, thank you, Councilmember Pamela DiGiovanni. We changed the PA system in here, comes out all the way out there now. I would like to also invite Supervisor David Canepa in providing some context. I know Supervisor Canepa, I remember right before the pandemic started, was right there in the, in the spear of the arrow, guiding all this with town hall right before the pandemic started and was a true inspiration in working with Seton Medical Center and getting everything solidified and Seton functioning, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic back then and now.
Great. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me now? Great. First of all, let me just thank the mayor and thank the council for holding such a critical form. As I've said before, my background relative to Seton Hospital, and many of you know Mary's help, is, is quite personal. It's personal sense, because I was born at that hospital. It's critical in a sense, because I continue to be a patient there. My family, my grandmother goes, has gone to Seton Hospital, still goes, my mother. So for me, this issue is a personal issue, and I think that's important to note. Right now is a transformative moment, and I think it's transformative in many ways. I'll give you a little context. Three weeks ago, I had the opportunity to work with a big issue at Sequoia Hospital with various allies, labor allies, and the issue was, was clearly this, is that ASME was having a difficult time with management. And so I had the opportunity to work with management, I had the opportunity to work with ASME, and one of the things that happened, and this is what I want to say, we need to get together. Management needs to get together with the nurses, with NUHW. We need to sit down and we need to solve this problem. And how did we do it? Well, we did it within a day. We were vocal, just like what's going to happen tonight, but being at the table, having people talk about what's important, and really coming together to put together a deal, I was happy to tell you this, it's a really remarkable story. It was about eight hours. They sat down for eight hours and they put together an agreement. And it was an agreement that I think both sides were proud of. You know, as mentioned, there was some talk around the finances. As you know, the county has put together a package, it's $20 million for the two years, it's $5 million from the county, and then an additional $5 million coming there forth. So the $5 million for seismic has been released. Then we also have the next tranche of the $5 million, which will then come from the county, then I sit on the, the health plan of San Mateo. Now, we may have a fundamental difference in this. At this time, I think rather than releasing the dollars, and I know one of the council members had suggested that, I would beg to argue that is probably not the, the right approach. The right approach is to right this hospital. I'm really, really looking at potentially, if we can't resolve this, a potential management audit to really understand in depth the finances of the hospital. And so there's $5 million, there's $15 million. In no way, shape, or form am I trying to say that we're going to withhold the money, but I just really want to understand what's going on with the hospital. And some of my experiences that are really troubling, we have equipment that doesn't work, we have elevators that don't work, we have supplies that aren't there, and I understand, I understand they're trying to fix the hospital financially, but we got to do two things, two things. First of all, if we want this hospital to be a successful hospital, we have to invest in the workers. We have to make sure, because our workers are our frontline people, we have to invest in them. By not making this investment, we're not really showing the respect they deserve, and it's, I think it's in the hospital's best interest, and I think it's in the employee's best, best interest. So we need to make sure that we have an agreement that makes sense. The second thing, we really need to make an investment in the facility, right? And I, I'm happy to know that the seismic work continues to happen, but we really need to make a concerted effort to get this hospital back. I am watching tonight, I'm going to be looking forward to the comments. I'm sorry again for many of you, this has been many, many years, many, many years where we're dealing with the same issues. We'll get through this. I see some folks from Seton here, they're going to help us, they're going to help us get to where we need to go. We need an open mind, we need to sit down. I thank you Fred Norajo for being here, Fred's on the board. I hope this message gets back, and the message is clearly this, we can't do anything if we don't sit down. And I hope that Seton management does the right thing, and they sit down, they talk with the, the nurses, and they talk with NUHW, and we resolve these issues. And so I'm going to be attentively listening, but this is a critical time, and it's a time for us, rather than looking at this as, you know, sort of bashing each side, right? This is a time where I truly believe that the ball's in management's court, and my message is this, let's sit down, let's talk. If you could do it in six hours and come to agreement with the nurses, that would be better than the eight hours, but let's do something that really uplifts people. And then the other thing, patient staffing is a concern of mine. Patient staffing is a, is a concern. Patient staffing is a concern. Let's make sure that if we want to be this world-class hospital where people come, let's staff it appropriately. And so, Mayor, I just want to thank you for, for allowing me to speak, and I want to thank all of you for being here. I'd like to say this might be the last time we're here. Maybe Tina, maybe it will, it could be Tina on, but we, all we want is for us to be able to sit at the table, and I hope tonight, when you go back to the team Sarkis and, and Ken Sims and, and, and the doctor, Dr. Wu, just tell them, we just want, they just want to sit down, talk, and work out an agreement, and if we can do that, I think it's best for the hospital, I think it's best for the community, and I think it's best for the workers. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Canepa. Thank you for providing the context and also, you know, helping, trying to address and alleviate these things that have been happening at Seton Medical for, for years. And so with that, I have a speakers list here that I'd like to call upon speakers just to hear you all out, to help educate myself, my colleagues, and everyone here that is in attendance. So first speaker is Kathy Evans, RN. Is it Richard Ders? Hopefully the, we do a mic check down there, I hope the microphones work right there.
I think it should work.
Should work, okay.
We have the tech in the back just in case. Let's try it.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kathy Evans. I'm an RN on the Subacute Unit, a nurse rep, professional practice committee member, and on the bargaining team. I've been a nurse at Seton going on 18 years now. Last week, nurses at AHMCC to Medical Center unanimously, unanimously, oh, sorry, unanimously voted to pass a vote of no confidence in the hospital's administrator Sarkis Vartanian. After months of negotiations, we have seen Mr. Vartanian continue to undermine nurses and healthcare staff at Seton by ignoring our concerns around patient safety and staff retention. We have had two unit closures in the past few months. In March, they permanently closed the skilled nursing unit that provided essential care to elderly and other patients who are unable to be discharged home and still required short-term rehab, wound care, IV antibiotics, et cetera. Many of these patients were transferred to another unit 30 miles away, which places an additional burden on the family and friends who visit and support their loved ones. In May, AHMCC abruptly closed down the geriatric psychiatric unit, one of the very few in the state that provides high-skilled psychiatric care to geriatric patients suffering mental health crisis. This unit accepts patients from as far away as San Luis Obispo and Yuba Counties. The unit has won awards and is a valuable revenue source for the hospital. Management says the unit should reopen by November, but nurses say these patients should have been relocated to a vacant space at the hospital while seismic repairs are made. In the last two years, Seton has lost more than 100 experienced nurses, some of whom have worked at Seton for years and some even decades. Nurses are not leaving the bedside because of COVID, they are leaving because of moral distress. When we aren't staffed properly, this impacts our nursing care, and we suffer moral injury and distress when we're not able to care for our patients in the manner as we know is best. We want to provide best care possible to each patient as it was, as if they were our own family member, but AHMCC has failed to provide resources we need to care for our community, and we will not allow them to prioritize hospital profits over safe patient care. Our nurses have made it clear what their priorities are: patient safety, safe staffing, and nurse retention for this community. Our patients deserve better, and our community deserves better. As union nurses and patient advocates, we will continue to hold AHMCC accountable to the needs of our communities and demand they prioritize safe patient care over profits. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes.
Kathy, could you?
Sure.
Yeah. So when you say that the geriatric psych unit is shutting down, does Seton have any psychiatric services now?
So the nurses, once the unit had closed, originally, they're supposed to give a 30-day notice, so at that time, they did not give enough notice, and they started to discharge and transfer the patients out. So little by little, the nurses were getting canceled. Some of the nurses were able to cross-train in other units. The others, I'm not sure where they are right now, but at this point, I believe a lot of the nurses are probably, you know, finding other jobs, because who can wait six months? We have families to care for and you have bills to pay, so you can't expect someone to just be on hold and put them, you know, their lives and everything for six months. to just be on hold and put them, you know, their lives and everything for six months.
Does Seton take 51-50 patients?
Yes.
So, what's happening to 51-50 patients that go there now?
Well, we do, I was in psych unit, and we do take 51.
So, you're still doing that now?
No.
No more? What's happening to the patients who are 51-50, who you don't take, where are they going?
Most likely at the county.
Okay. And then, when you say you've lost 100 nurses, is Seton filling those 100 nurses with traveling nurses?
No, we don't use travelers at all.
Okay.
No traveler nurses, we've had a lot of new grad staff, but essentially, Seton is pretty much a training ground for nurses. They come in, they get their experience, and they leave. Especially a lot of the nurses in the emergency department, they are coming in, and because we don't have a contract right now, we haven't, we've been in bargaining since last December, and we haven't had a meeting with management since, I want to say, since before our strike, pretty much. So, those nurses, because when they come in as a new grad, per the contract, you're supposed to, after six months, you get to the next step, which is a staff nurse too. But because we don't have a contract right now, and all the staff freezes are on hold, those nurses are not getting that increase, and so, they're finding other jobs at other hospitals, like I'm sure you've seen in the news, Stanford has, you know, a new contract, UCSF, so there's other hospitals within the area that these nurses are going to, and so that's why we're losing a lot of nurses.
And then, when, so you mentioned 100 nurses are lost, what is the number for full staff of nurses for Seton Hospital?
In our CNA, we have over 300, I don't know, Julie might be able to tell the exact number.
Call me later.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you Kathy for your words, next up is Deborah Lassos.
She's not here.
Okay, we'll come back around, Jennifer Barba.
She's not here.
Okay. Michelle Kubota.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Can everybody hear her?
Can you hear me?
Yes, okay.
Okay, my name is Michelle Kubota, and I have been working as an RN at Seton Medical Center for 22 years. I'm also a PPC chairperson, I'm a union rep, and I'm also on the bargaining team. We have been through over a decade of fighting to keep this hospital open, from bankruptcy to potential hospital closure prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. Our nurses and healthcare staff have not given up. AHMC has not kept their commitment to our community as they promised, they have not made good faith effort to recruit and retain experienced staff, bargain a fair contract for nurses, what we have instead seen more nurses leaving due to the mismanagement under the leadership of Administrator Sarkis Vartanian. It is unacceptable for the hospital to have basic supplies such as linens for our patients to continued credit holds from suppliers, causing not only patient care delays, but puts staff in extremely unsafe condition or situation. I will read a letter from one of our nurses from emergency room, she wants to be kept anonymous, so this is her letter or statement. "I am a former nurse in the emergency department at Seton Medical Center. It's unfortunate that I might say former, as I care and respect my coworkers there immensely, but I had to leave after sustained horrible working conditions became unbearable and threatened my physical, mental, and emotional health. The working conditions in the ER were constantly short-staffed in a way that only threatened my nursing license but patient safety regularly. As an RN, we are the last stop to prevent medical errors that may cause patient harm, but we regularly work short a few nurses at Seton to be adequately staffed and do this job properly. When I had to act in charge of the department, it would be normal to be short-staffed so that we had no break-relief nurse. No triage nurse to watch the waiting room and make sure that the sickest and most critical nurses were seen as soon as possible, and our nursing staff remaining to care for patients had less than one year of experience each. Because I had to not only oversee the department, cover triage, and usually take patients myself, covering, plus covering three-plus separate jobs, it was impossible to properly oversee that these nurses, though smart and hard-working, were supervised and supported properly with their lack of experiences. Many near misses occurred to patient safety. I recall one time, a lab result was obviously contaminated. The lab didn't catch the error, nor did the doctor attending to the patient, and finally, the new nurse didn't catch the mistake and administered a critical cardiac drug the patient didn't need and could have caused harm. I wasn't in charge that day, but everyone was so busy and tired after working 12-plus hours with no break that they, of course, didn't have time to fill out a report about the error. Not that I'm sure it would have mattered, since there has been no department manager in years. Occurrences like this happen regularly, every day. Everybody's too tired to fill out forms and dangerous conditions kept, get swept under the rug. What has AHMC done to support safe staffing? They won't pay for travel nurses to help pick up slack, they forbid overtime, sometimes I would volunteer to come in even when not in overtime and help out when they were short and was declined. In their media campaign, AHMC has stated how they hired so many new nurses, but what they don't mention is that nearly all of them are brand-new grads who didn't receive the customary clinical training, and many had never worked at bedside. Now, these brand-new nurses who were trained in their hospital orientation and thrown to the wolves with little support and mentorship, and forced to work with constantly broken and missing supplies are ready to leave for greener pastures. I don't blame them, since I left at my new hospital, since I left at my new hospital, there are still rough days, but there's always someone to help support when you're drowning. It's super difficult as a nurse, but ultimately, it's about patient safety, because without proper staffing, it's the patients who suffer, laying in their own excrement for hours at risk of false medication errors or simply deteriorating because we are so busy and constantly going out of races that have been established for patient safety. It's also worth noting that I got a 12-hour raise and great benefits that I didn't get at Seton. I feel so much better supported and appreciated, but I want for my coworkers and patients back at Seton to have the support that they deserve as well. So, we're here to hold AHMC accountable for the administration's failure to provide nurse with the resources and staffing to provide the highest quality of care to our patients. We're asking the county and city to help ensure an investigation is launched. Thank you.
You, Michelle.
Can I ask?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I ask, you talked about being short-staffed and people are tired, and could you tell me what, what kind of hours are the nurses working, average-wise, and how many days usually the stretch that they work and things like that? And then, also, I'm interested in knowing about the break periods and what they're allowing you to do.
Okay, so, I work in a med search telemetry COVID floor, so we're 12-hours nurses, most of us are, so we're supposed to have a break, I believe, for the first four hours, 15 minutes, and then you get a meal of 30 minutes. Before the end of the eight-hour shift, you're supposed to have another 15 minutes, and then the last four, to make that whole 12-hours, you're supposed to get 15 minutes break. A lot of times, we don't have a break-relief or charge nurses, charge nurses are supposed to overlook at everyone, patients, and especially, we have a lot of new nurses that needs guidance, but when we don't have a charge nurse, we don't have that, they, we, and the new nurses, they don't have that support. On top of that, when you don't get to eat for the whole 12-hours, that's also tough. Yes, they do, they did hire nurses, but it's still not enough, because as much as they hire in, a lot of nurses are also leaving. So, that 12-hours, we do need a break-relief and a charge nurse, which we don't get at all times.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle, next speaker is Teresita Guino. Not here. We have Dr. Robert Perez.
So, I think you can all hear me, I've done this gig before, three years ago, when we were trying to get money for Seton Hospital. As you may recall, Verity was, you know, gonna probably just file straight bankruptcy and try to sell the facility to some other real estate company. The board at that time intervened, because we interviewed a really good company, AHMC down in Los Angeles, and they showed us that all eight of their hospitals were the Medicare either four-star or five-star hospitals, beautiful hospitals, well-run. They were an A-rated safety hospital, elite, fantastic, and they said, this is what they're gonna do for our hospital. So, this is why, four of us, four physicians went down there, we saw what we liked, it was fantastic, and we bought it. Then we had to convince the board, several of us worked hard to do so, because there were two other competitors, two other people that were on the docket to try to buy Seton, and they weren't as facile, nor did they know how to seem to, they didn't seem to know how to run a hospital as well as AHMC. So, AHMC, we saw, has the ability to run that hospital extremely well, but what they lack is, is money. And I'm gonna digress for a moment, because I want you to remember that, you know, we should be a class-four or five-star hospital, and that's what we were when we transferred over. David Canepa and myself, a few others, we worked hard with the county to try to get money, because this is a two-part story. We were able to garner 20 million, I'm still not clear how much we've gotten, I know 10 million was supposed to come from Health Plan San Mateo, did that ever come from the San Mateo yet?
So, it's in two tranches, right? The county has 10 million, 5 million of that has been released.
I understand that.
We have a hold right now as we speak on the 5 million, and then the Health Plan of San Mateo, which I and other members sit on the board, there's 10 million there.
Right, that's a hold still, though, we have not received that, correct? Right.
Yeah.
But furthermore, you eloquently outlined that there's another 200 million in the coffers of the county money, because the county's very, very flush, and you went through a lot of good mathematics, and kudos to you, David, you worked very hard to get that, but your other colleagues then faltered on us, you know, when we did an incredible job with the COVID situation. We were, I mean, heroes is an understatement, all these people here, you know, everybody, who do these, you know, not just the many nurses and the janitors, all those people who came in and they risked their lives for this, not just this community, but also prisoners. So, we did a pretty unbelievable job. Shouldn't we've gotten that 200? No, we should have gotten 400, that's what we should have gotten, you know, and that county kinda screwed us on that deal. My point is, though, we have done so much volunteer work, this hospital is so important for this community, we have done Herculean jobs on taking care of very, very sick people, people who are in the ICU, we saved so many lives, I remember those early days, you know, we didn't know how to dress or whatever, I got COVID three times, but thank God, you know, it was nothing for me, but it was, for my family, it was a big impact, my daughter almost died. So, but getting back to the importance of this hospital, and also the money that's owed to this hospital, if we had a tenth of the money that we deserve, we should have had that 20 million, it should have been a quid pro quo right away, but there's a group of people in the county division, it's not just these nurses that are holding back any kind of money, it's the county that should be giving us the appropriate amount of money. They build parking lots for 50 million, 75 million, but none of those parking lots ever save lives, it's Seton Medical Center that saves lives. So, now, getting back, because I'm probably way over my time, but we did do our share of taking care of these patients, these nurses, it's an underestimate of what some of these descriptions are. I see what's going on with my patients, it's very difficult to bring patients there, they won't come, a lot of them won't come because they're upset, it's not my call, I bring them in there because I assure them, I'm gonna make sure you're gonna be taken, well taken care of, and that's usually, usually what happens. Once in a while, more often than I'm happy with, things happen. So, that's why, you know, I come back to the, not just the first part that's important, and that is getting us the appropriate amount of money. That 15 million, a shame on them that they haven't given it to us by now, given it to AHMC, give them a little chance to get going, but the second part of it is that, you know, I was disappointed in the way that the current management has treated the nurses during the strike. I witnessed that, I bought the nurses lunch for two days, because I felt bad how these people give so, beyond so much in their lives, and sometimes, you know, you gotta, even if they're your adversary, you gotta be kind to them, you know, you gotta help them out, bring something to the table, don't just, don't just say, get lost, we're not gonna teach you, get off the property. That's not a way to negotiate a contract and keep people here. I, you know, David's words, eight hours, I think they'll be there for 80 hours before anything happens, so I'm not optimistic. I think there has to be a fundamental change in administration's attitude towards coming to a deal, because I work now, unfortunately, at Sequoia Hospital, where they just had a strike, I saw what they did, I saw how it got negotiated, yes, it was ugly for the first three days, it wasn't ugly, it was just a typical, you know, shouting match initially, but then it got resolved after three days, not three strikes later. So, I'm hoping we can do this together. You know, there are many other things I could talk about, I don't wanna betray any of the confidence of the board, although that is important now, because I handed my resignation into the board about an hour ago. So, you know, I've been here 30, four decades now, four decades, and I've never seen anything like this, and I'm very concerned that if the administration doesn't, doesn't wake up to the most precious asset that they have, it isn't actually the funds that we should get, it's these people that are here that work and give so much of their time and life and earnestness toward these patients, you can't buy that. And we have, so many of them walked out the door, so many of these poor people walked out. These people are not white, privileged people that work here, they are people that understand the poor, the homeless, those who don't have what many of us have. So, you know, this is why I'm here to support them, and I think that, you know, it would be more physicians here if they saw that there was an opportunity to talk about, you know, what goes on in there, and how important it is, the one asset is not being revered here. So, that's all I have to say, I don't want to air any dirty laundry.
Thank you, Dr.
Oh, right. Great.
Thank you, first of all, for being here, and your service, I cannot even speak words right now, for you to have to be pushed as well this far is really disgrace, you actually saved the life of one of my friend's, watch a nameless daughter, so I wanted, I commend you, and I think that you have been with the fight with us, and I know that even if you're not around, just like the nurses that are per diem, come back and fight for the people that need it, the underserved people in our community, and...
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. I still have my office here, as long as Sarkis will let me stay.
And then, I have a question, so you were telling me something about, would you mind elaborating so the people know the safety of doing surgery under the current conditions?
You know, I would prefer not to comment.
Okay, okay, so I won't hold you to that, but I want to thank you for your service and that, to hear that, your resignation, I'm sure is a big shock to our healthcare workers and nurses, and I don't know if anything could change. and nurses. And I don't know if anything could change.
I'm still a full.
Okay, okay. So there's not enough to say that, you know, you're God-sent?
Thank you.
I think that there were a lot more people that worked to keep Seton open, and I commend you as a doctor. But I know that David and I know that Pam, there were many nights and days I drove by and Pam and David are in front of the hospital. So I know that a lot of people have helped. And we're local residents. We would hate to see the hospital blow.
We agree with you. And that's why I said there's two components to this.
Absolutely.
One is, there are people that are in City Hall that I feel they have, they have a huge doubt as to giving another check to this current administration. I'm not sure if that's a fair, that's a fair maneuver for them to do.
Because also, that's not their local hospital either.
Pardon me?
It's also not their local hospital that they would go to as well.
Again, there's something called white privilege around here, and people don't understand that because we aren't the right people, that it's not worth giving to. So the meager money that we were supposed to get, this is the richest county in, not in California, in the United States of America.
So Dr. Perez, speaking of that, remember the last time we were here, I believe one of the doctors spoke about, "We never got the money," right, from Measure W?
And that's another problem. That's another issue. We never get the allotted money. They taxed the fellows on that, on that Measure H, I think it was.
Yeah.
But the point being that we never got it. David did a wonderful outline, you know, detailed, half an hour presentation on how much money that we should've gotten from that, not to mention, you know, the services that we perform. And it's irritating to no end to see that, you know, we, we don't, we haven't gotten a twentieth of what we deserve. If you've given somebody, you know, I would even be willing to trust AHM C as long as some of it's allotted to the personnel, you know, to run it, because they know how to run a hospital. I saw those hospitals. They were, they were, I mean, the top-level hospitals in California, eight of them. And now, currently, we're a, we're a, they probably, you know the numbers, is it a C or a D? Yeah, it's a C. So we've fallen from an A to a C in two years. And CMS, you know, like the Centers for Medicare, we're a, we're a two. We were a four. We were a four, and we're now a two.
I know we need to move along with our meeting. Councilmember, is there a way, if I can, other colleagues would like to ask? Okay, go right in.
Yeah, so with the Measure W, because I know he's versed in the county supervisor Canepa, if there's, is there any viability that we can get that money when you laid it out that is owed to us?
Let me sort of explain this. And I think it's, I think it's really important to just provide a little context and background. Measure A, the county is, when it first originated, gave Seton Hospital about 60, 65 million dollars, okay? As we begin to evolve, right, we go through different ownerships. We go through the Daughters of Charity, then we go through Dr. Patrick Soon Shiong. And as we begin to spend this money, remember, these are taxpayers' dollars, right? One of the things that we realized with Dr. Patrick Soon Shiong, that we needed to have more oversight of the dollars. Because when he sort of up and left, you know, the dollars were accounted for, but we just didn't know precisely how they were expended. We figured it out later. My advice to you, and I really think everyone should consider this, and really take a step back. I think right now, we're in a pivotal moment. And the pivotal moment is, we have an agreement. That agreement is spread over four years. 5 million the first year, 5 million the second year, 5 million the third year, 5 million the fourth year. What I'm just trying to understand, I know everyone wants the money upfront, but we have a moment here with these dollars to hold management accountable. Why would we spend dollars if they continue to make these cuts and hurt the organization? What we have right now, respectfully, is we have leverage. And our leverage is clearly this. If the hospital is not functioning and operating, why waste the money? Let's make sure with this issue and other issues that we're able to assess and evaluate, evaluate it every year, rather than just throwing money away. Now, secondly, 200 million dollars. And Dr. Perez operated on my wife, and he's a great surgeon. But 200 million dollars, if you were to take that from, if you were to take that from the county reserve, it would be depleted. I mean, it's 200 million dollars is a significant and huge number. We have other responsibilities throughout the county. So if you look at the number on balance, right, I've told you about the 60, 65 million dollars we've already invested. Now we're looking in a strategic way, which benefits the workers here, right? It benefits the workers because now we're able to hold them accountable. The other thing that I would look at is, this land is extremely valuable. And it's this city council that controls the land use of the property. We're all, you know, we're all interested in immediacy and making things happen right away. I think the best approach for this community is to really, rather than just throw money right away, is to really look at it as a way to hold AHM C accountable. Because at the end of the day, that's 20 million dollars. That helps them with their seismic. And that's what we should be focused on moving forward. One, I don't want us to get burned. I don't want us to get burned like we got burned last time by Dr. Patrick Soon Shiong. And so that's the logic. That's what I'm thinking. And in addition, let's do this. Let's work to find a solution to figure out the nurses, the CNAs issue, and let's work out to figure out what's going on with NUHW. That's what we're here tonight, and that's what we gotta do. That's the first priority. But just spending money, to sort of spend money and say, "Hey, AHM C, here's your 20 million dollars," to me, I think it's a disservice to the workers, disservice to the patients by just throwing money at an organization that obviously can't afford to fix the elevators or give us enough toilet paper. Thank you. The chicken or the egg?
The chicken or the egg.
Yeah.
Give them money because obviously they need it with stipulations. I'm giving you X number of dollars. I expect within the next six months, or whenever you think is viable, to do such and such. You do that, we'll give you the next.
See, and that's, in the contract, in the contract, the way it's built in, right, is it's, you know, it's 5 million dollars. Then we're able to reassess, look at the financials. We need to do it over a period, period of time. We've been burned before, and I'm not gonna be burned again by giving them a blank check for 20 million dollars. Well, it's, there's... Yeah, with the language, you're right. With the language that's built in, we believe that we were able, there's some protection around it. And you don't want to give 20 million dollars, and then it's just, it's just gone.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I still say, they need the money. Obviously, they're not doing certain things.
So the money goes, remember, the money goes to the seismic, not to the operating. So the money that's been programmed, the 20 million dollars, goes to the seismic retrofit of the hospital.
I apologize, sorry. I apologize. I know there's a long list, and I want to just, you know, honor everybody else's space. I know Councilmember Manalo has been waiting patiently, so...
But before you do that, Mayor, I have to clarify something for the supervisor. And I appreciate the explanation. But I remember when Adrian Tessier, no, this is important. I was speaking about the Measure W money. These people need to know this. Not, I know David did a great job about explaining that part. But it's important because he's here and he's able to explain it. It was the Measure W money that Adrian Tessier that I was speaking of. And so I apologize for not clarifying it for the supervisor.
Okay, yeah. So Measure, Measure W is transportation. It has nothing to do with the, it has nothing to do with the hospital.
Right, but Adrian...
You're talking, you're, you're, Measure, yeah, so it's two different funds. So let me just give you the background. Measure W was passed for SAM Trans and for traffic improvements.
Right.
It's Measure A, which then became Measure K.
Oh, that's right, Measure K.
Measure A, Measure A then.
Yeah, and then Adrian said that they owed us money.
So I know we need to move on. Sorry, Pam. I just, we have a long list. I know Councilmember Manalo's been waiting. So I just want to honor everybody's time.
But we need a lot of clarification tonight.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Doctor, for those words. You know, my question was actually answered. It was for Supervisor. I wanted to understand strategically why the dollars are being held. And hearing you explain really the opportunity to have leverage over actually management that's not moving. I mean, I'm hearing it from the workers and the rallies. They're here today, and they're not budging. So what's gonna make them budge, right? And so we know, I mean, I can see why strategically that is, because that's an element that this organization needs to do. They need to, the state has said they need to do the seismic. And besides that point, and I see where that leverage is, what really needs to happen is management needs to listen to the workers. And that's, that's, that's where it's at right now. They are not listening, and you are all on the front lines with an adequate supply. And so I think that's where the crux is. And Supervisor, I hear the, what you're saying, like, let's get them to the table. I commend all of those workers that are at the bargaining table. I know you have been relentless in this effort. But it takes two to get an agreement, and we really need AHM C to step up. And, you know, we've been in this room before, and it's really their responsibility on taking on this hospital. You know, the doctor said it earlier, there was this trust in this organization to take over. And now it's really in their hands to honor and respect the workers that have been the backbone of the hospital. And so strategically, I definitely understand why you're headed in that direction, Supervisor. I think we are all here today to push the needle forward, and I look forward to hearing more from each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manalo. Next speaker, Myra Erpe. Is Myra here?
No, I'm not on the list. I don't know who put you on there.
Oh. Would you like to come speak?
No, spoken enough.
Okay, thank you. Al Erpe. Grace David.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. I support what you were saying about the audit. Understand that it should be made, but I think it should be made as soon as possible because this is a critical time. And if you do find out that what we need is funding, hopefully money will be released by the county, correct?
Yeah, I think, let me, let me just say this. We put out a press release today with Julie Tran and CNA. And I think what we've done in concert, and just so everyone knows that I'm not operating in a silo, is that CNA, and Julie may want to speak to this, is really, we want to hold them accountable. We want to hold AHM C accountable. We want to make sure that we understand what their finances are, whether it's done through a management audit, whatever it is. And so you have to understand this, I think it's critical, is that working with CNA in concert, wasn't just sort of David Canepa thinking about this and coming up with this, his own idea. I think what I've heard is from Julie and the partners, "Look, those monies should not be released. We should look at an audit to kind of see what's going on." And I think, once that happens, Grace, you know, then we can, we can begin to have another conversation. But we just want AHM C to hear us, to listen to us, so we could sit down and negotiate a contract, whether it's for NUHW or whether it's for, you know, CNA. So that's, that's the key focus, and that's what we're acutely focused on tonight.
There must be some solution right after the audit, whatever the finding is. If the finding shows that what we need is the funding, then the funding can be released, hopefully. I have a second question.
Yeah, so let me answer that. So we'll continue to work with the city council. We'll continue to work with the mayor's office. We'll continue to work with our allies in NUHW and CNA. We'll continue to work with them because they're the ones who are really helping us and guiding us through this. So rest assured, any decision made is certainly not by me. It's a collaborative decision. It's a decision made by many.
My second question is, you mentioned that you, what's also important is investing in the workers. So that also, we also need funds for that, for adding more nurses. Evidently, it's the staffing that's important. The supplies are not there. Funding is really important also, so.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, one of the things that the county has always tried to do, tried to do is to support where we can support, and we'll continue to do that. Now, you have to remember, AHM C is a privately-run hospital. It's not a nonprofit. And so it's incumbent on them that they make the right investments in the employees, right? That's, that's, that's key. And so the county doesn't hire or fire employees there. In fact, the AHM C is a privately-run company. But what the county does do is we try to support through, you know, through the money that we've given to date and the money that we'll continue to give.
But you were saying that the million dollars that are appropriated is for seismic and not for the hospital.
Yep.
But maybe it should be looked at because, just like the doctor said, the, like, the roads and whatever are not saving lives. It's the nurses, the employees, the staff that's really saving lives.
Yeah, no. And, and, and look, I remember, Grace, when we were here and we were fighting to get those dollars. You spoke, and many others spoke. And I just, I just want you to know and to be very clear and make no mistake about it, my main goal is to support a hospital that has supported so many people and has supported myself. I care about this place. And so I think where the disagreement is, and I don't know, Julie, if you could speak to this, it would be really helpful. Let me kick it over to Julie. Julie?
My name's Julie. I'm a labor rep at CNA, and I represent the nurses here. I think it's important to know what David is saying is correct. I mean, there's a lot of, there's issues at our hospital, right? There's a lot of accountability from management. And, you know, you'll hear it more from some of the staff and community members. But at the end of the day, there's not enough staffing. There's a retention issue, and more so, there's safety issues. When patients are coming in and there's not enough supplies, linens, or there's credit holds, there's, there's issues, right? And that can't be corrected by just seismic, right? At the end of the day, the money that was promised from the county to Seton Medical Center or AHM C was for seismic. The crux of the problem is that AHM C took over our hospital through bankruptcy. They knew the issues. We addressed it many times at town halls here, at the county, I mean, countless meetings and town halls. And they made promises that they were going to fix the issues. And there's been longstanding issues at our facility. And our nurses and staff know that, especially the nurses and staff that have stayed here for decades, right, through the many changes of different ownership, bankruptcy, and so forth. And at the end of the day, it is AHM C's accountability under Sharkus Fratian, the administrator, that is covering the hospital at the moment, not making any efforts to make changes. He's not here, right? So other administrators are not here to make, you know, any comments on what's happening. For months and months on end, nurses have seen it on the wall, they're seeing it on the wall, right? That supplies aren't there, linens aren't there, staff are leaving. As Michelle and Kathy have noted, who are on our bargaining team, 100 nurses have left at our hospital. We're a small community hospital, we can't afford to have nurses leave, right? So.
Hopefully that audit will be the start of.
Yes, we're hoping that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Next up, we have Brian Flowers, a community member. Brian?
I have his story.
What's that?
I have his story, his story. But I'll tell it later.
Is there a way we can get through the list first? Because I know that we were here for community folks to speak and.
Yeah, he is a community.
Okay. Brian?
He's not here.
Okay.
He sent me his story.
Ronnie Miller. Somebody was. Okay. Okay. Norm Keenan, community member. Norm?
Do you want to say anything? Mr. Keenan? Sharon, would you like to say anything?
Okay. Sharon Keenan? This is safe space, okay. And then we also have.
Lily, would you like to say something?
Oh, Lily, would you? Okay, come on down.
Come on down.
I feel like we're playing Price is Right.
Hi, I'm Lily Louis, and my daughter was an emergent patient at Seton Hospital in the ER. And I'm the mom that Pam was talking about. And she was in ER in the hallway for the longest time. And there was no room available in the ER. And so unfortunately, with COVID, no one's allowed, no family members allowed. So she texts me and showed me a picture of her, and it was near the parking lot. I mean, you could see the parking lot, so. Thank goodness Pam made arrangements with me, and I met with Sarkis, the medical director, and I think it was the head up the RNs. And initially, I was not going to meet with them, but then I thought about it, you know, I'm going to be that person to represent the folks that are afraid to speak up and the folks that don't speak English. And we talked about patient care. I said, this is bullshit, because you cannot have patients in the hallway with one sheet and patients that are not taken care of. You should at least have nurses to at least check on your patient. I said, your patient could be dead out there in that hallway, okay? And I said, I know this hospital was purchased by Chinese investors. And patient care is very different in Asia than in the United States. In China, patient care is provided by family members and not nurses. I said, you cannot, and these investors cannot expect to have that kind of patient care by family in the United States. So I worked in healthcare for 15 years. I worked in finance and accounting. So I worked for Blue Shield, I worked for Mills Peninsula Hospital, and I worked for Kaiser. So I know all aspects of how healthcare works, okay? And I know everything is about the bottom dollar, okay? So don't try to pull anything on me. But patient care is so important in the healthcare system, okay? Even that little touch of having a nurse's assistant or someone to check in on the patient and ask them, how are you? How are you doing? But thanks to Dr. Perez, he's the doctor that performed surgery on my daughter and saved my daughter's life, because she could have died within 24 hours. But the nurses at Seton are wonderful. My mom had surgery there, and I said to them, I said, this is my hospital, I live in Daly City. I said, I want you guys to survive, I want you guys to be in our community, and, you know, we don't want Seton to fail, we want Seton to survive, okay? But so we want the best for Seton, and we want to work as a community together, okay? So, I mean, I fully understand, having worked in management and admin, what it's like to survive. But I fully understand as an employee also what we want from management, you know, our salary, our pension, our benefits, you know? So we need to mutually respect each other. I've been a union employee also in my work, so I've served as president, and I understand fully how negotiations work, okay? So you both have to reach out to each other and start somewhere. So I hope everything works out for both sides, and I wish employees all the best. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a speaker, Rosa Shields from San Mateo Labor Council.
Hello, just beginning to hear. Good evening, Supervisor, Mayor, council members. I'll keep it really brief, because I know we've already gone on. But, you know, you heard from all the workers here. Is this one? Hello, yeah. You heard from all the workers here, and, you know, you've heard from a lot of different stakeholders. But I'm a Daly City resident, my mother was an LBN here 30 years ago, and there were issues at Seton then. You know, we've been at many meetings, many picket lines, many actions around Seton. So, you know, I'm not going to repeat everything that's already been said, but we just really, on behalf of the San Mateo Labor Council, and as someone who's a community service worker, Seton is an essential community resource. And we need to do everything we can to provide the resource for the workers, for the patients, and for the people of Daly City who pay taxes here, work here, and whose families come here. We need to protect our workers who are leaving, who aren't being treated well. And we need to hold this corporation, which is a business, which profits off of sick people, off of people of color, off of workers, off of all the people in this room, we need to hold them accountable. And if there's going to be an audit, you know, is that going to be released to the public? Is that going to be common knowledge? Who are the stewards of our money here? So on behalf of the Labor Council, we, you know, support these workers. They've been working for eight months without a contract, and we really, really, really need to do everything we can to support the nurses, the workers, people of Daly City, who really count on Seton as an essential resource. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosa. I'd like to also extend one of my colleagues from Colma, John Goodwin, if you would like to. No? Okay. I don't have any other people on the list. I know Pam, you said you wanted to share a quick story.
Yeah, without revealing too many, too much of this person's thing, I would like to say to the people that this gentleman has an ongoing health issue and been treated at the hospital many times, and then showed up one day with a PPO. Not understanding why in the world, and maybe I could talk to Tina about it or whatever, they did not accept the PPO. When the person was on Medi-Cal and he has an ongoing condition, his question is, why didn't they accept the PPO? They need money? It would have been a good payer and would have paid immediately, but got refused treatment. And now this person has to drive to have treatment to another hospital on the 280 and lives in Daly City to another hospital with a kidney condition and could pass out on the way with so much pain. So I'd like to see why they're not taking the insurances as well. And then I have a closing comment, once my colleague's that, but I just wanted to get, this person is a resident here and couldn't be here and wanted the person's story told. And it's so important, and to let, and to thank all the nurses for saving his life. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DiJavani. I guess with that, there's no more people on the list. I'm going to shoot it to my colleagues for any closing remarks, if you'd like to. Oh, oh, yeah, go right ahead. What was your name again? Tina.
My name is Tina On. Good evening, members of the Daly City Council, Supervisor Canepa. I'm the Director of Business Development at Seton Medical Center, and I'm in my 12th year here at the hospital. I have experienced firsthand the two bankruptcies that we had before AHMC's ownership in 2020. My colleague joining me tonight is Dr. Connie Wong, who's the Chief Medical Officer and the VP for Medical Affairs and Quality with the hospital. She's also with the hospitalist program and continues to practice medicine at Seton. So she and I will provide an update on Seton Medical Center since AHMC took ownership. In addition, I'd also like to just acknowledge Fred Noronho. Fred's here, who is the Vice Chair of our Board of Directors. So just to set the stage, from 1965 to 2020, Seton was a tax-exempt organization and did not pay property taxes on its buildings, including the hospital, Seton Coastside, the medical office buildings, and the parking structures and parking garages that were under its care. Since AHMC's ownership in fiscal 2021 and fiscal year 2122, Seton Medical Center has paid 2.2 million in property taxes, and this money contributes directly to community benefit programs in the county and in Daly City. For fiscal year 2021, Seton Medical Center suffered an audited financial loss of nearly $27 million, which is about $2.1 million a month. And in fiscal year 2122, Seton is scheduled to lose over $20.5 million. As of July 31st, 2022, Seton Medical Center has paid $29.8 million, nearly $30 million, for seismic construction. This is money that has been paid out the door through the banks. Units eight, nine, and 10, we invite anyone to come on campus and tour. Our floors eight, nine, and 10 are scheduled to open at the end of September, and floors six, seven will open the end of November. The rest of the facility is seismic compliant, and we are also making upgrades to the outer areas of our hospital. Seton's labor cost for fiscal year 2021, salary and wages only and not benefits, was $99 million. In fiscal year 2022, our funded payroll expense was $105 million. I have copies of the financial progress that I'll leave with you. I'm happy to also give those to representatives of the Labor Party here. I'd also like to invite Dr. Wong right after me to also provide the rest of our update. And I just want to thank you for your time tonight for us to give an update about Seton Medical Center under AHMC's ownership. So let me turn it over to Dr. Wong, and in the meantime, I will provide copies of these documents to the members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Good evening, members of Daly City Council and Supervisor Canepa. My name is Dr. Connie Wong. I'm the Vice President of Medical Affairs and Quality, and started in 2016 as a hospitalist director and continue to work as a hospitalist at Seton Medical Center, caring for hospitalized patients. Just sharing some further numbers. The amount of spend on benefit, in addition, in fiscal year 2022, we spent greater than $22 million in healthcare benefits to qualified employees and immediate dependents. And in fiscal year 2021, $13 million. This is, on average, 703 direct employees and 1,002 qualified dependents, so supporting 1,700 members with insurance. In addition, AHMC ownership since 2020 has invested $5 million in capital improvements that directly impact quality patient care, including buying a new heart-lung machine, a digital x-ray machine, IV pumps and other necessary needs for critical care, a 3D mammography machine, CT PET scanner, and a new sterile processing department. All of these have been used to directly help with patients. We are in a pandemic and now finally coming out of it. There are huge supply chain issues. There has a lot, there's been a lot of difficulty in running a hospital. And I can speak from both administration as a working physician. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doctor.
I have a question.
All right, Vice Mayor. Oh, Councilmember Manalo? Okay.
Either you or Tina, maybe you can have your ask. So, and just following up what Supervisor Canepa had mentioned about, that's a lot of real estate up there. And my question is, if you know, what is the total square feet of real estate Seton has? And if you could tell me, is, are there any parts of the total square feet that's not being utilized, that is basically vacant, if you will? And if there are, what plans, if any, do you have with the remaining real estate?
So Seton Medical Center and the medical office buildings sit on 33 acres. We invite you to come on a tour, so you can see how we utilize the property and walk with us, we're happy to do that.
Hold on, but I'm trying to, if you could answer the rest of my question.
So we have medical office buildings on the campus, as well as our hospital, all of which are in use, and our parking structures.
So there's no, if you will, vacancy or real estate that's not being utilized? That's my question.
So we invite you to come and see our campus, we would welcome a tour to provide you.
No, I would rather you answer my question, if you could just answer that.
I think I just did.
No, you didn't.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Manalo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see a lot of figures here that you've provided, which I appreciate, kind of this overview on the dollar amounts and everything. And I think my question is in regards to some of the issues that I've heard around lack of supplies or, you know, for patients or even for the healthcare workers. Has there been issues in those areas, and have you, are you going to try to fix it? This is what I'm hearing.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
There's been issues around supplies that I've heard from the workers and also patients, you know? Not having linen, and so I wanted to understand, you know, why, why has it come to a place where there isn't sufficient supplies for the workers or even the patients? And so are you also going to try to ensure to fix this?
The administration is currently actively seeking to remedy that. There are supply chain issues, coming from a company from bankruptcy, you have to often change companies. There's a lot of disruption, we are working in the middle of a pandemic, you know, unfortunately. But it's currently being actively worked on.
Okay, so you are working and ensuring.
Yeah.
And you have a commitment to, so that the workers have adequate supply and the patients? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Tina, I wonder if, or Doctor, could you answer, you said they're doing outer area upgrades. How, what is the cost of the outer area upgrades?
I don't have that information available.
The reason I ask that is that in order to have a hospital, I speak in closing in a little bit, you need to focus on the inner upgrades and give the nurses and the healthcare workers a contract. Because you cannot have a hospital without the foundation, and the foundation is the workers. The workers, and you have to take care of them first. We know that firsthand from having, running the city. We have to take care of our workers. So they're the foundation, so the money that we're doing on the outer. To be put with a contract. I heard that they were cutting down trees and making a new street and getting all these calls. calls. So I would say, I don't understand that, when we have people, we have patients inside that are needing the care, and they don't, they're not, they're sitting here tonight after working 12 hours, having to come here, and many of them live far away. So this is what I'm trying to understand, and there has not been no movement, I guess my colleagues are aware of this, no movement, zero. And I've contacted Linda Marsh, the Executive Vice President, every single day, and the nurses and the healthcare workers are aware of that, and texted her, emailed her, and she is one of the decision makers for the contract, which I understand that Sarkis is not, but Sarkis is not here, and everybody is missing every time we're there. And the nurses are not even allowed to use the restroom when I'm there on the premises. So I don't understand why we're redoing a road when we don't have a foundation on the inside, again, with the workers. So we need to give them a contract. You guys have the connection of somebody we don't even see named Dr. Wu. We don't even know if that's what he looks like. So I'll be making a closing statement later, but I say stop the outside upgrades, take those monies, and give it in a contract, and help our workers. They're the foundation of our hospital.
So before we end, and with our closing remarks, is there anybody else that would like to go right ahead?
One question that wasn't answered, and I agree with you. You asked square footage of the facility, the whole facility? They avoided answering that, or they did not know the answer. And I think someone in their, their job capacity should know what the capacity, what the, what the land value, what the land footage is of a facility. If you've been there that many years, or you're that knowledgeable a person, someone should know square footage. I'm sorry, and I agree with you that the answer was not answered.
Thank you. I think we have one more. Would you like to go? Go ahead, Fred.
I have a question, because I'm a little privy about what's going on, what they're thinking about the development of the property. One of the things that the owners are thinking about is developing the property for assisted living for seniors, because we have a real issue here. We have a real inequality of healthcare for people of color. You know, they don't get the kind of assisted living care that they deserve. They also are thinking of developing the property for affordable housing for nurses, for people in this community. They are engaged in dialogue right now. I just called to ask if I had permission to discuss this with the, the city council and to David Canepa as well. They're engaging a group of people, and they're having current dialogue, because what they want to do is build a community on that campus that provides healthcare for seniors, for people of color, assisted living, skilled nurse, skilled nursing, where they can provide almost a staff model like Kaiser, where they have the doctors, they have all the different facilities for oncology, whether it's diabetes, whether it's any of the chronic disease. So seniors are suffering from loneliness. They want to deal with a community of wellness, where they, seniors can exercise, can be engaged and communicate, you know, to, to basically have an ecosystem around wellness and care. They are engaging right now, which I can't, I'm not at liberty, to discussing a group to build something like that for the city of Daly City, for San Bruno, for South City, for the working people of a community, because they're truly not treated equal in terms of equity of healthcare. And we have been having some meetings with these folks right now. They, they have allowed me to be a part of that meeting, and I've helped engage some people that have built an ecosystem like this. So that's the answer on the property. They, they want it to be a benefit for Samhita County, and looking at federal, you know, resources, state, local, and they're about to do a letter of understanding where the people we're talking to can, you know, do a, an evaluation and a report, and how are we going to put this together? And how are we going to do this? And they're truly committed to wanting to do this. And, but we have to see how economically, and I agree, we need to sit at the table and sit, get the unions there at the table, with them at the table, and, and lock them up in a room until they get it done. So I just wanted to answer your question to that.
I very much appreciate it.
Where the nurses lived before, that's a huge, that's a huge area there. There's a parking area.
There's a lot of property there.
Yeah, I know there is.
There's 38 acres there to develop, but they want it to be a benefit for people of the community and the diversity of this community, and to reflect the kind of square...
We obviously all want a white building sitting here.
How can you run all that facility? You can't even run a community hospital. How can you even hope to... Well, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, but I'm just answering the question about the property. I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
But I just want to let you know. Well, I, you know, I, I can't answer some of the questions, but I, I know, you know, from my, as a community representative, I, I want to make sure that the things that I've heard today goes back to the management. And I want, I want to, that's why I'm here, you know. I should be, I'm, I'm...
Hey, Fred. Fred? Fred, Fred, let me interrupt you, okay? Let me, let me kind of save you here. With all due respect, you know, we've been talking now for about an hour and a half, right? And, you know, I'm seeing no action, and I'm getting a little frustrated. I'll be honest with you, getting a little frustrated. Getting a little frustrated. Now, the right thing to do, the right thing to do, each one of you should say, you know what we're going to do? And I haven't heard it, and I'm getting, you know, I was, I was doing pretty good, right? I was doing pretty good. But I haven't heard you say, not one utter one word. You know what it is? We want to meet with the nurses. You haven't, you, you haven't said that.
What did I say? Let's meet with the nurses? Let's meet with the state...
So Tina, I don't mean to put you on the hot spot, or, if you could both come up here, please, I'm sorry. So I think what's good, I think what's good for this community, what's good for the hospital is, and I, you know, I have sources, but I think, you know, CNA is, you know, they're available all day to meet with your management and to hammer something out. And I think what doesn't behoove the hospital, and I, I will say this, I was a little disappointed on the land use answer. And I feel like we're hiding things you don't need to hide. We're hiding things we don't need to hide. Let's do the transparent thing. Let's do the transparent thing. You call Ken Sims, I know the council has, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna close. You call Sims, you call Wu, you call Sarkis. You got about 20 minutes. I have my son's dinner at 7 o'clock. It's his birthday, his fifth birthday. And let's figure this out tonight, because if not, it's only, it's like a snowball. It gets worse and worse and worse. I've been doing this for 14 years. I've worked for electeds for 12 years. The path you are on is not a good path. And I'm, I'm telling you, as a friend, who's lived through this and lived through many other things, call them up, set a meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM, and let's figure this out, and let's be serious. Can you make that commitment to me?
So Supervisor Canepa will take that information back, and I will relay that.
Okay, so let me just, okay, so let me, let me put it to you this way, okay? You can do that, okay? You can do that, but what I'm telling you is, I think it's the wrong decision. We just got done, I just got done with Sequoia Hospital. They were able to work out a situation. I don't know why you guys don't take counsel from others, counsel from the council, counsel from the community. This is in your best interest. I've never known of an organization who says they don't want to meet with people. I don't get that. I don't get it. I don't get it. The answer should be is, yeah, we're going to meet. We're going to talk. We're going to figure something out. It's called diplomacy in the international world, right? So if we don't do this, you know, I'm going to call a hearing at the Board of Supervisors to really understand what's going on. I'm frustrated. I feel many of us don't feel heard, and it's disappointing. It really is disappointing. All you have to do is meet and talk, okay? Let me give it over to Jocelyn, Manolo, Jocelyn.
David, I want to know that I'll do everything I can to get the meeting going.
Fred, with all due respect, I want it done, okay? I mean, we can talk, we can talk about theory. I want it done. Sorry. Thank you. We all want it done.
Call Linda Marsh, Executive Vice President. I have her cell number.
Councilmember Manolo, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Supervisor Canepa. I think that the message is clear. The workers want to meet, and I, and that's the bottom line. It's been since December, and that's quite some time. It's more than six months. And, and it's really unfortunate and disgraceful that there's not a real effort to meet the workers that are on the ground working, the nurses that are the backbone of this hospital. I think, you know, it's being stated here, you know, CNA is ready to meet. And, you know, I think that will show that you truly care about the hospital that you're investing in, if you meet with the workers that are ready and willing. The other side is ready to, and willing. And so, you know, I'm, I'm hearing you're going to send the message, but if you could just send the message very clear that, you know, meeting with the workers tomorrow is essential and key, because if AHC cares about this community and this community hospital in Daly City, it's urgent, and it has to happen tomorrow, or actually today, if you can give a call. Yeah.
You should be texting right now. They know you're here, so they're waiting to hear what happened. You have 10, 15 minutes to make a phone call.
Are you, are you closing, Ken?
Yeah, I want to say something. I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Sir, the community leader, would you, I mean, the board member? Would you mind telling us what you do as a regular profession when you're not?
I'm in healthcare.
In healthcare, as in?
I, 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 in healthcare for self-funded insurance for, for...
So you have a vested interest in the AHC for your own personal gain? Is that true?
I, just so you know and understand my background, I used to get show of care at that hospital. I used to shine shoes in front of that hospital. David will attest to that. I used to get freaked out.
Okay, thank you. So what I was trying, trying to hear is, there have been meetings on assisted living and other subjects. There are seniors who you are saying they need assisted living. Well, there are seniors in Daly City and beyond that need access to healthcare.
It's not about assisted living, it's about the hospital. Stop asking about assisted living.
And these are our people in color, as our, turn around and look at the faces of our nurses. To say that in this community and to address that you're saying that you care about people of color, will you just turn around and take a look at our nurses and our healthcare workers? Now you tell me, if you care about these people, then you do something about it, and you give them a contract, and you give them a fair contract so they can continue. Not talk about assisted living, not talk about having, already having meetings. These people haven't had any productive meetings. And, and with all due respect to my colleagues, and I'm sure they're already aware, they have met at the table numerous times, but there's no movement, no movement. And if you don't have Linda Marsh's cell number, I certainly do, then I really need Tina and the doctor, and I know you guys aren't the decision makers, but I agree with my colleagues and Supervisor, that this is going on too long. This is affecting the people in our community per diem, and they are fractured. They've, if anything, this is the worst it's ever been. I have talked to these nurses, when they go through COVID and they make phone calls, they can't go home, they're crying. I'm calling Julie, trying to get them hotel rooms, because they've been exposed. This is, this is, it's just horrible. It's inhumane. We are here in Daly City, California. This cannot happen to a Nurses Union, to an NUHW, to a Local 39, or any other worker. They have workers' rights, and they are being torn apart. So I do think it is still early, and I think Linda Marsh is still up, and Dr. Wu, and Dr. Sims. And I think that we should all be listening in to hear what they have to say. And I think some of us, we all have their cell numbers, and I think before we leave here, we need to call and find out, when is the contract going to be signed? When are we going to have healthcare access? Why is it our people in our city? Is it because we have 72% immigrants? I'm beginning to think so. We have underserved community here. It is unacceptable. I'm of Jewish faith. We do not accept it. Physicians do no harm. Physicians do no harm. The owners are physicians, and they're doing harm. And that is unacceptable. So I'm, you know, I mean, I have a lot more to say, but I will cut that, and they may make a call, and I think we're all on board on that one. And I think that, you know, enough is enough, is enough. We all say that when we're on, on the strike line.
Number one is, we need to support these nurses.
That's right. They need a contract now. NUHW and their, and their bargaining group didn't have one either. They need a contract now.
So I know we're getting about that time. I'd like to be mindful of everybody's time. I know everybody misses their loved ones, and I'd like to offer to my colleagues, if you have anything in closing.
Okay, I guess I'll go. So I want to thank everybody for participating, and, and I want to thank the conversation, because it has been enlightening to me. There are things that I liked and nice things that I didn't like. And I, I think I have some information, but obviously not everything. And I'm going to work towards getting involved and getting, playing a role, because I think we, as a city, can play a role in trying to help push this forward, because I think collectively, if we all work together, we can do something about it. And, and the city does have some power. And it's about trying to organize that power, trying to see what we can do as a city, but also on an individual level. So I, I, I'm not pessimistic, because I, I do think we've, we've struggled through tough times before, and we've managed to, to get out of it. I do believe Supervisor Canepa has a lot of good points, and, and I think he's going to partner with us in an effort to try to resolve this. But this is too important for me as a person. I've had many, many emergency visits at Seton Hospital. They have taken care of me and my family, and I'm not about to let that place go. And I'm concerned about the, the quality of care, the nurses, the workers, the patients, and the community. So I thank you for giving me the information I need. I look forward to getting more, and I look forward to working together with all of you. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Manolo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you each and everyone of you for coming this evening. You know, in closing, there's really two things, I think, that, number one, please listen to the workers and nurses that have been constantly wanting to have a contract signed. These, I'm going to say it again, they, without them, there would be no excellent patient care. So that needs to be number one. So that needs to be number one. Number two is, I think we all care about this hospital holistically. And as Vice Mayor mentioned and Supervisor Canepa, who has been a longtime advocate for this, there, there has to be a light at the end of the tunnel and whatever way we can do that, let's work together to find a solution. And if it is a land use decision where it is transparent, where it is community centered, to be able to build resources and finances to give back to the workers, right? And it is great to hear the ideas of housing for the nurses and being able to figure out ways to sustain this hospital. But I think that the best approach to do so is in a community centered fashion where the dialogue from the workers and the community builds upon this idea and collectively. And so those are the two things that are last on my mind. One, get the contract signed as soon as possible. Number two is, let's continue working together to find a sustainable way to save the hospital long term. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manala.
There's not enough words to say that I see the faces out here that I see on the, on the line. Michelle, Kathy and everyone and Leilani, Julie, and then all our community members that have had utilized, some have had services taken away that needed infusions and it closed down and now they go far. Can't have a baby here anymore. This is very serious. This is urgent. If we had something catastrophic happen at our ceremony mall or even in these chambers, our firefighters, our chief is here tonight, where would they go? Where would they be taken? Would they make it? I think not. And even as hard as they work to try to save them, I can't imagine the struggle within their heart and what they've been through and tearing them apart. And then I know Dr. Wu, I know like a lot of us not decision makers, but you are a doctor and that, that's very serious. And then these are the decision makers and Sarkis, he can't even show up. He looks out the window at us. He doesn't even have the nerve to do that. It disrespects our nurses not to let them use the restroom. This is unacceptable. So to say that they've been at the table, they've been at the table, no movement, no movement. Kathy, Michelle, no movement. That is crazy. We lost, what, 100? Per diem? They didn't want to leave. I go to their retirement parties, they don't want to retire. They just break them down. Is that the idea? I don't understand where they're going with this because one of the floors made money that they closed. And that nurse, one of them, actually lives in our Daly City too, in the psychiatric, which is the most needed right now during COVID. It doesn't make sense. Shipping patients to coside, some didn't even make it, I caught calls, when they got to coside. I don't understand you ship patients over to Haveman Bay. My patients, people here don't even have a car or transportation to see their loved one. So I agree with the colleagues that we can work together. We always say that. This is a different time than before, respectively to Supervisor, I think he's aware of it. This is the most critical, and I've heard it from them directly and I'm sure you have too, David, that this is the worst it's ever been. They have been broken and it's up to us to make sure we put it back together. And I will fight, we have to put our stuff aside and we will. I mean, it's about all of you, all of you and our community. That's what it's about. It's not about building assisted living homes and doing a land use, whatever, because that's down the, I don't even know. I don't know, comfortable even giving them anything. We can't trust them. So let's get the contract, then let's go from there. If we don't have a contract, then we're going to call the, every single legal attorney general, whatever we have to do to make it happen. Because even if you're a private corporation, you can be investigated and that needs to be done. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Di Giovanni. In conclusion, I just want to say thank you for everyone that came today. It's late and I know people are probably might be hungry, it's dinner time, so I'm going to keep my comments pretty short. When I see the nurses that came and spoke, it reminds me of my mom. My mom was a nurse for over 30, 40, 40 years, 30, 30 plus years. She worked the graveyard shift. I wait for her in the morning and after the graveyard shift, she would cook me breakfast. And then she would sit down with me and tell me about her whole night. Ay, Radare, you should have heard about this patient and that patient. And I would tell her, Mom, I don't know if I could ever be a nurse. I don't know if I could still, could stand seeing blood or other stuff. And she was my hero. And she's not the only one. My aunties, friends of mine that are nurses, my sister-in-law are nurses. And I saw the desperation, the anxiety, the overwhelming stress they had gone through over these past, was it 29 months now? And they're tired. And I plead with folks from AHMC, meet them. This is the right thing to do. Morally, this is the right thing to do. If you have an alignment of your mind, the body and soul, this is the right thing to do. And I always question myself like, what is history going to say about this period? You do not want to be on the wrong side of history. And when I see Seed Medical Center, when I drive by, that's where my first born was, was born. And so it definitely holds a definite important place in my heart. And in times of crisis, there's also potential for hope. So I pray that we can get something done. I'm an optimist and we are all here to make this work. So thank you, everybody, for coming through and have a good night.
Thank you, Mayor.